Ow. You know what? I didn't pay attention to that one because I'm like, oh, we just got it. Worst kind of time.
You know what? It's a learning curve when I'm helping you get out.
Okay, yep. Yeah. Thank you. Yep, nope.
Hey, where are you?
Good.
Hey, Jim.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Jim.
I feel like I just grabbed that group. We'd just like to.
All in force now. Okay, this must be who's the.
If you ever have any questions or concerns, give me a call.
Alrighty, great, thank you.
I keep going. Hi, Lori.
Hey, Lori.
Hi, Lori.
That's our thing today. It's like one after another. Kind of peppy.
I like it.
You kind of gave it to the.
How are you?
Thank you.
This right here. So is that? That's on the.
Yeah, we got a little power without the hatch in it, yeah.
Okay.
That's about 20. We've been kind of saying 10 years out. We've been saying 10 years out for two years.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
Yep.
Alright, it's 6:30, so we'll go ahead and get started. Right on Nykor.
The shields.
Jim Richards.
Dana Berger, right now, Matt.
And if you were the approval for agenda, two items. One under H1, Parks and Trails. This is regards to lions and ice cream. Here and hot chocolate event in the Bay area. And the other item is to move up high, the planning and zoning. Dan Johnson's wall feasibility cost. 4,500 dollars, move that up to before L. If anyone will move it up to.
Motion to approve said changes.
Second?
Second.
Lori, second please. Any comments and discussions? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, approved. I have a public forum. However, three minute time limit per person. City council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments must be pertinent to city businesses and address here to data privacy rules. No employees names may be used. We cannot expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium, state your name, address, and fill out the form provided. So if there's anyone here within the public forum, please come forward. And for those people that are on the Zoom, if you would like to speak after this, after the first speaker, just unmute and state your name and your three minutes.
Hi, I'm Mark Tyne. I live at 11032 Cedar Beach Drive Northwest Orinoco. It's in Orinoco Township. So I'm your Omsa County Commissioner for District 7, and I'm here to speak to you on behalf of an issue you have tonight regarding waiving of possible liquor license fees for the establishment within your city tillies. And I'm here to speak in favor of that. I spearheaded Omsa County granting the same relief to the five establishments that are within Omsa County that are not within the city limits. For Uncle John's, Douglas Saloon, Shar's Cucup Palace, Oak Valley Golf Course, Maples, Maple something Golf Course. So my reasoning behind that is that when you grant or you sell a permit to somebody, you're granting them the license to do something. And in 2020, we granted, we sold them a license to conduct their business. And then due to the pandemic, another level of government took away their ability to do that. So if we charge somebody to allow them to do something, and then we take away their ability to do it, I don't think it's fair to charge them again the following year. We, it just, it seems like a compassionate thing to do is to recognize that we are in special times. Grant them some relief so that they can, they can conduct their business hopefully in 2021 for the whole 12 months. You're still going to get property taxes from these businesses. It's, 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 it's just asking that you have some compassion for these businesses that were shut down. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Would anybody else like to speak to the public forum? Second call for public forum.
Anybody online?
Anybody here? Okay. Third and final call for public forum. We'll close public forum at 6:35. Okay. Before we begin our agenda, first of all, I'd like to introduce Jim Richards and Dana Berger, our two new council members. We're glad to have you on the council, and we look forward to working with you and hope it's a good experience for you and ask a lot of questions, so thanks for coming.
Thanks.
First item is Sergeant Chambers is our new. I don't see him, anybody here to speak to him, so Dan's son, fire department.
Good evening, Dan. Alright, so we had three runs. We had a first responder fire crash that got canceled, so that was a non-issue. Christmas Eve, we had a call of somebody with some smoke in their basement. It ended up being a fireplace that was dropping some coals into a little ash area below their fireplace that they never knew existed in the home that they bought about a year ago. So that the ashes were on the basement and they caused some smoke, so there was really no fire, but just some concern. So we're glad that on Christmas Eve, it was not a major incident. It was just teaching the homeowner about their own house, so now they know to clean out the ashes in this little trap area. And then on the 19th, we had some fire alarms at Hilltop Camper. So early this spring, so 2020 spring, they had an issue with their sprinkler system and it ended up being the exact same issue. Some, something was plugging up and filling with water, which triggered the system to think that that fire alarm was, was triggering, but it actually wasn't. And so we basically did the same thing we did. We helped them basically drain some water out of it and then had the sprinkler company come in and fix it. So again, luckily, nothing that was there. We had two people finish fire school, so we sent our people through the same fire school that any other fire department would send. So there's firefighter one, firefighter two, and hazmat. So it's, they started in, it was August timeframe and finished in December, so it's a pretty big commitment. So Leif Danning and Abby Shovic both finished it. So that's a good recognition for them to spend all that volunteer time, you know, doing that. That was multiple nights doing homework and also they had multiple times of actually driving to Austin and doing hands-on. So if you see them, say congratulations. We had one firefighter who joined us last, I think it was July, and then just did not show up. So we finally asked him what his intents were. He said he's going to resign, so I guess I'd like to have the city accept Jason Campbell's resignation from the fire department.
Make a motion that we accept Jason Jackson's presentation.
A second.
Jim? Okay. Correct. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Then the sweatshirt approval. So next month is our 50th anniversary, so we're kind of excited that, you know, the fire department, long department has grown for 50 years, and so we're trying to think of what we can do in a COVID area, COVID era timeframe to do something to recognize it. So we're thinking we'll do some stuff on social media, and maybe if things light up in the fall, we'll do some kind of, you know, recognition event to have people come. But one of the things that we're doing is we're thinking about maybe getting some hooded sweatshirts that actually say, you know, 50th anniversary, you know, 2021, kind of bring a little celebration to this event. We've had some new members on our department since we've last ordered sweatshirts, so it's that time. And I had put some budget this year, I had put $100 ahead for our members to kind of allocate it for some kind of apparel. So we've got a quote, they're about, you know, 32 to 34 a piece, you got to buy 50. And so I estimated with some shipping and handling about 1,700. So it's, you know, it's within my budget. I think it's going to be good use, you know. Again, you see us wearing around, you know, our apparel, kind of hopefully promoting the department, always looking for new members, so it's kind of a nice way to recognize. I guess I'd like approval to go ahead and order the hooded sweatshirts for the department. We do for both fire and first responder, even though it's coming out of my budget.
Dan, are you going to have extras to sell to the public or will it just be for?
So we'll have extras. We typically don't sell to the public. For certain people, you might donate one, but we try not to sell. The problem with selling apparel is that you have no control over that apparel. So if somebody goes in a bar and gets in a bar fight and they see that apparel at all, then that could be, so we, for one year during Gold Rush, we did get some shirts that said Orinoco Fire Department Supporter. So we tried that, and those sold, but it wasn't the greatest thing. So ever since then, and plus what we heard, we're like, eh, I don't. But we can, we can probably make them, get someone, someone really wanted one.
You're thinking of having extra for when you get new members on too?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, plus I said this is going to say 50th anniversary on it, that's why I happened a few extras. Probably going to be a good thing, you know, versus our normal standardized, just local.
Okay.
Motion to approve sweatshirt purchase?
Second.
Any other comments? I think it's great. I didn't realize the 50th anniversary is coming up, but that's great.
Yeah, it's kind of a fun thing, so I'm hoping to do a little more research on what it is. It was actually February 14th of 1971 when Lasceys created the department.
Does the history center have any information, maybe, upstairs?
I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
The history center upstairs?
Yeah, probably interested to go see what they have. Like I said, you know, it's one of our, one of our big times to make a little splash, so.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Approved?
Did you want to do the donation from bankers?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we, it was a late question. We were going to do that, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll just read the letter. So the fire department got a letter in the mail from Pine Island Bank. So I thought I'd just quickly read the text so you can kind of get the gist of it. Pine Island Bank is pleased to donate to your organization. We appreciate all you do for the community and hope this donation is able to keep your efforts moving forward. I'm going to have an effort to raise awareness, encourage you others, you know, I'm going to work with them to do some social media. Good luck in all your do. So we appreciate it. So the $1,000 donation made out to the fire department.
Make a motion to accept the donation from Pine Island Bank. Comments? Okay, you said done before. The first time I've ever been here, I know you heard it's all.
I don't remember it being done in quite some time. I know they, I've seen them do it before, but I think this is the first time we've got it, or even as, it's been quite a while. So we appreciate it. And so what I'll do is I'll, I'll think of something to spend it on and then come back and let you guys approve it.
Any other comments? Not all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Alright, first responders, we can see the runs there. So we have six in the city, two in the township in November, six in the city, six in the township for December. Just quickly mentioned, one of our members, Koby Keely, is going to school to be a police officer. He finished his EMR as part of the police officer, and he's been on our department, so now he's been starting to respond to runs. So we appreciate having another, another member, the first responders, to come to run, so that's a good thing. Just want to then do also that $500 check. Did you want to do the $500 check donation too from Joyce?
Yes, let's see that too, that's true.
So we have one of our founding members, his name is Joyce Berg, he just passed away recently, and we had responded to various calls at his department, I guess how, so his wife or his family gave us a $500 donation to the first responders, was a kind of appreciation for taking care of him. So we appreciate it, we didn't expect it, so we appreciate it. So that was a $500 check, so I guess I'd like to accept that for the first responders.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from the Berg family. A second?
Second.
So Joyce was a founding member of?
Yes. Yep, that's, we're going to try and, I'm going to try and bring some publicity to actually who were some of the founding members, but he was one of them.
Any other comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion for accepting the donation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
And the EOC, nothing. Probably start, probably start talking storm watch here probably a couple of months, so. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I apologize, I need to go back to the OCSO, we have a prosecution service agreement that was in from the county attorney, that was in your packet. This is a two-year contract stating how the prosecution services and the fees are handled between us and the county. We're a two-year contract from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2022. Make a motion that we accept the new prosecution service agreement from the county of Omsa. Any other comments about the prosecution agreement we had a chance to read it?
Before.
Not all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Next is our personnel committee. Start that off, we have our outstanding citizen award presentation. So Poe and Skyler, please come forward.
I dressed up for this.
Greetings, Orinoco City Council.
My name is Bo Hannover, live at 210 Second Street Northwest.
And I'm Skyler Reitstein, 540 Valley View Room Southwest.
Along with Vice Mayor Shields, we formerly served on city council for many years, and with your continued permission, we will continue to serve on the outstanding citizen committee.
Many years ago, when we were on city council, Orinoco tragically lost longtime businessman Gordy Caravol. When this award was dreamed of to honor Gordy with help from his nephew Mac and the support of his wife Yvonne, we saw a need to recognize so many people who give back to Orinoco, our hidden gem of the community in Southeast Minnesota. Without these types of volunteers, the city wouldn't survive, let alone thrive.
The award hangs just to the right as you enter into the community center.
Current and past residents can be nominated annually as long as they resided at one time within the city of Orinoco. Next nomination window will be later this summer or early fall.
The awardee for 2020 began volunteering over two decades ago. Eventually, an opening on the city council arose, and this person stepped up to represent the city, serving in a number of capacities and participating on numerous committees over many years.
This person made the vocation of serving our city seem like a vacation, always stepping up when duty called without complaint and going above and beyond many times.
While no longer on city council, this person continues to volunteer on the Gold Rush Committee in an effort to continue giving back to the community.
After numerous candidates were anonymously considered, with unanimous support of the Orinoco City Council at the December 2020 meeting, we'd like to congratulate.
Mr. Kevin McDermott on being Orinoco's outstanding citizen for 2020.
I didn't see that one coming. You called me up to just come to the meeting and I said, well, yeah, I'll come.
You're going to keep talking, you have to give your address. Maybe your certificate, maybe with Joanne and Ryland and stuff, we'll get your picture? Is that okay?
Unless you want to give a speech.
Right.
I just, I want to thank, thank everybody for, for this award. I mean, I don't know, it's been since 2016, since I've been out of, off the council, but a lot of time and dedication to the, to the community, and I enjoyed it, I did. I mean, I don't know where the time went, because there were 12 and a half years I, I served on the council and then I was the mayor and, and Gold Rush, and I don't know, I just, I, I can't say enough about this community. And that's how, that's how this, this, this community functions with volunteers. I mean, all of you that serve are volunteering to give your time to this community, and I want to thank all of you for that. And, you know, without us, without anybody, this community wouldn't be what it is. And it's a, it's a great, great community, and I just want to thank everybody for the nomination and award here, and I look forward to, hopefully when the Gold Rush comes back, I'll, I'll be back on the garbage duty. That's where I started, when I first started on council. That's where, after I got off council, that's where I went back to. That's fine, that's great, so. Thanks again.
Congratulations.
Alright, great, well, I have the opportunity to work with Kevin on the council, and he was my mentor for mayor, and I really appreciated his time and, and conversations we had when it first started, and still do for that matter. Okay, next item is our liquor license for tillies, or some, we talked about this in December, I think it was, at that time, I really hadn't done much research, and so that's what prompted me to bring it back, to put it on the agenda again. And with that research, then I reached out to Mark with this, with comments, which I summarized in the packet as well. They also, we went in and I had the staff look at surrounding cities, and you can see where a lot of cities that started doing this back in May of last year, when originally the first shut down, they came back with another one at the end of the year. So it's really, it's a goodwill gesture, but at the same time, it's, we want to make sure that our small businesses and restaurants that we have in town is very well-liked, not only, but our citizens, but the surrounding community that comes to tillies too, so. I think they've already paid their 2021 fee, which is the $1,700 that I referenced in the packet. And if you look back since March of last year, they've been less than 100% capacity. They were 50% for a while, then they were 25%, and then they were closed. So I would, I'd like to propose that we, and I will make a motion that we would, and for discussion, of course, to refund the 2021 license fee to tillies for $1,700 to demonstrate to the city our commitment to tillies and to, to the people that do enjoy coming to our local restaurant. We have a lot of activity coming up here with contractors, with our sewer project over the next couple of years. We know it's a go-to place for workers at noon and as far as evening and weekends too, so. So I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Jim, thank you. Any discussion or comments?
Would it be for 2020 that we're refunding or 2021?
2021. So they're not having to pay the 2021 fee. It's kind of a.
Because they already paid the 2020. Because they already paid the 2020 and they didn't get to.
Right.
License, so. And hopefully the pandemic is, will get to a point where they're back to a higher capacity, 100% capacity even in the majority or a good portion of 2021, so it kind of helps out what they did last year and going forward, so. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Super, thank you. Back in November, I think it was, there was some discussion from, from a public forum about chicken organs. Talked about that with residents, and so we, in your packet, there's some information about the different ordinances regarding packets from Pine Island. Is that the Plainview? I'm not sure if Plainview, Zambroda was in your packet, so we can, this is a general discussion, if we want to pursue having our attorneys draw up a chicken organs. We can do that, we can have them have them after a city, if that would be something council would like. If we're going to do something, we need to give our attorney some direction. I think the Pine Island is a very detailed one. Obviously, they've spent, put a lot of work into it. She was just adopted in August of last year. So that's what we do, after three chickens. Zambroda has 10 chickens. I'm not sure what Plainview is, it's mentioned there in the packet. Three to me, I'm not sure, did you check Rochester if it was for three or?
I didn't know, check Rochester.
To me, I guess I, in reading all of these and seeing the numbers, I, I would tend to say up two, but, you know, not more than five. Because I think three, it'd be pretty limited. You know? If they're hens.
And I did research, I just did research beyond that, and it, urban chicken, it's three to four is very normal, and you get a decent amount of eggs for that, which is what most people are doing for your household, not to, you know, have a business.
Right.
So three to four seems to be the norm for, for, for urban chickens, and you can get plenty of eggs from that. So I would, I would say three, I would, I would say four, a limit of four would be what I would.
I think three or four, I think, I was just looking at the Pine Island, I don't know if they.
They say three.
Two square feet for chicken. Two square feet for a chicken identifies the size of coop as well.
I see there's, they talked about a fence around, it, from what I read, it seemed like they, they wanted a privacy fence around the coop, so you couldn't really see it. I don't know that I would suggest that.
I don't see the point in that, when you can still smell it and hear it.
Right, right, and I, I would say no roosters, just like they did.
So with an ordinance, we have a public hearing as well to get feedback, you know, so we can
So how does that work? Would there be like a subcommittee to draft this ordinance with the lawyer or how does, to give guidance or?
With, the attorney will draft the ordinance and then it'll come back to council for review and then we will set a public hearing date for the public to comment on it and then after that public hearing, then the council will vote on it.
Okay.
I was just looking for the comment, I, I remember reading through and seeing that, but I don't remember the privacy fence being
Yeah, Pine Island, you added in there.
Number K on the Pine Island one.
Yeah, let me see.
Number K on page 123. Any coop or run shall be screened with front view with a solid fence or landscape buffer with a known height of 4 feet.
I liked Zambroda's except that they said 10, I think that's a lot. But I liked theirs, it wasn't so strict, except I do think we, I do think that we need something about non, not slaughtering chickens. I think that's the reason isn't an ordinance already. I feel like there was problems with that in the past.
I think Pine Island has that in there, a couple of them do, and I, I agree. Slaughtering next to it.
Well, it sounds like there's some Is, um, Sandy, I'll call on the line?
Yes, I am.
Hey Sandy, you brought this up originally in a other forum, do you have any comments?
Um, the only thing I would add is, um, from the public information that I received back, they did want, you know, some people mentioned ducks and then there was also the ability to, you know, rent goats came up. So those were the only things that came up in addition. I think currently, you know, right now, according to the ordinance, you can't even rent a goat if you wanted to, if you had so many acres of land to get rid of the buckthorn. So that was just something that another community member brought up that I just thought I would bring forward as part of the research and, and data that I got from the surrounding people from Orinoco. But Rochester does allow three chickens if, in case you were curious.
Thank you. All right, um, yeah, with the goat rental probably would be a separate subject of course, but, uh,
Yep, understood.
So, so I guess if, if there's a consensus, have the, um, attorney drop us an ordinance and if we want a pattern after Pine Island and maybe just refine it with, uh, with a number instead of three or four. Five seems a little much, but
You know, and I think
Not making it to sell, it's just for the
Right. And I think too, Ryland, if the person, if a person has a lot more property, that's, I think it personally would be different if I lived right in town and the lots were small. I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd want five of them next to me. I mean, I, I don't care about chickens, but, you know, I like chickens, but you know what I'm saying? Some people, the smaller lot, the closer the homes are, it may be more of an issue if you, you know, for that person than it would be for a person that has, you know, three acres or an acre or whatever.
Well, and I can tell you that I lived in Rochester and my neighbors' two houses down had chickens and it is an unpleasant smell with three. So it, and from three houses away with fairly large lots.
Fairly what?
Fairly large lots.
Okay.
So
You said you could smell it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And I, I think part of that too is, you know, that's, that's one thing I liked about Pine Islands. There were stipulations for keeping it clean and
And, and they, they kept it very clean and took care of them and it was a very nice coop. It's just their stinky birds and they smell.
My dad has chickens, I absolutely would not want them next to me based on where my house is, in my one acre lot, even though I'm not on a full acre, but almost. If the neighbor to my north put in chickens right along that fence line, I would be within less than 50 feet of those chickens and truthfully, I want no part of it. I live in the city because I don't want farm smells, if I did, I'd live in the country.
Well, and the ordinance for Orinoco, or for Pine Island does, you know, have has a and what is it, 10 feet from the property line, 40 feet from the principal structure. So there, that's nice, you know what I mean, that we could, we could make it so that there's a
But if you think, if you think of, of your lot line is here and someone goes 10 feet from, from yours, you know, your side versus the, the inner, I don't know, parts of your lot, it could still get pretty darn close. I don't know.
I'll make a motion to reject the chicken ordinance in any form.
To reject it?
To reject it.
Reposing. Is there a second? I have no, I'm sorry.
I see.
Or hearing no second, the motion dies for like a second.
I'd like to see something from, from the lawyer and, you know, see what language we could put in it. I, I don't think denying people that want it, but I think we need to also be thinking of people like Trish or like myself that have lived with it and, um, you know, we need to think of those people as well.
Would it be possible to put in a stipulation or something that you would have to have neighbor approval or neighborhood approval? Or I don't, I don't know, is that something we could?
I wouldn't recommend it just because of potential disagreements. You know, like if I don't get along with Jim, but Jim wants to request chickens and I'm one of the people that has to approve it, is that fair to him? Not really.
Or what do you do if you sell your home and the person next to you has chickens, then can they say?
Well, that's just it, it can affect a real estate sale and everything else. So I don't, I don't think I'd put that burden upon neighbors, I think it could create conflict.
So has, I've lived in two different towns and, and, um, well, more than two, but in Rochester and Orinoco and I, in Rochester, I never, I lived in three different homes in Rochester and I never lived by anybody with chickens. I'm just wondering how many people actually get chickens if we pass an ordinance? Cause from what I'm understanding, we are one of the only communities in the area that doesn't allow chickens. So
It's my understanding from Pine Island, and correct me if I'm wrong, for your, you've only had two or three?
They had one and then that person after they saw all of the stipulations that they had, never.
Okay.
That's kind of what I'm wondering, would, how many people will actually take advantage of it and, you know?
Yeah, I know of two properties here in Orinoco where there have been ducks. I don't know about chickens, but there have been ducks on both properties and there's been complaints about them.
And I don't know if we really need to, ducks to me, I grew up in the country, we have, my neighbor, the ducks are everywhere. It's just a, to me, that's not a town
Right.
thing.
I agree, that's why
I, I feel like ducks need water, they need a pond, they need a source, you know, and, and that's a whole other thing. So I don't, I don't know if that's something I would think we should consider, I, I like the chickens, I think that there's especially since we are the only town and we're a tiny little town and much of our town is spread out and a lot of people do have bigger lots. I'm in favor of it as long as we can put the right um, language in the ordinance to make
Why don't we, if you want to pursue an ordinance being drawn up, we can have the attorney do it to pattern after Pine Island. We can, um, bring it back in and, um, discuss it in a formal manner, make suggestions, vote on the suggestions, that type of thing before going to a public hearing.
Am I understanding we used to allow chickens?
No, I think we don't.
No, we used to.
No, chickens are not allowed.
No, we did at one time, yes. It's been a very long time and it was because of what you had mentioned.
So I just wondered too, if we had, if we already have something to go on somewhere, I don't know how, if we keep records.
That I wouldn't recommend it, I would recommend that we start at a base and go from there. Thank you, Kevin, congratulations.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks. Um, just hearing what you said about Pine Island, is it, if, if the, if there's so little need, I mean, if one person in Pine Island wanted it and then saw what the stipulations were and then didn't do it, are we, I hate to go back on what Trish mo- motioned, but are we gonna spend the money to have the lawyer draft something and then put it together and then not have any
Well, I don't, and that's why I don't, personally, when I was looking at Pine Islands, I thought it was a mu- a little much, that's why I liked some of the other ones and like I said, I did research beyond this too, cause I'm a nerd. And I found that there's a lot you can do, you can make it what you want to make it. So I don't, I would hate to spend time and money on something that you're never going to allow people to have. That doesn't make any sense to me. So I would do some sort of, I think something between the two, like
Yeah, like just take a blend of both of them.
Yeah.
Take what we want out of both of them.
Right.
Put it together.
And I've had ones who have chickens, granted they live in the country, but I could even, you know, I could ask like, hey, how does this work? And I know that she only has three and they built a really nice looking coop and, and so we could, you know, we could draw from people's personal experience with them and
I still feel like chickens are farm animal, they belong on a farm, not in a city lot. I mean, it's like having cows or ducks. I don't know, I just don't feel, I don't feel good with it, not at all.
But I will say some of the bigger cities even allow them.
That's them.
But I'm forcing this one, I have to come around her.
No, I, I just really honestly, I mean, our city gave it a chance and I just don't, I don't know, I mean, it's come up because of, to my knowledge, one person. There hasn't been a real driving force, I want to say of a lot of people, there's been one individual who has wanted and has pushed for, and I get that and I don't have a problem with that, but I just don't feel it belongs in this community. There just hasn't been enough interest either that it warrants that kind of expenditure with our lawyer.
I believe she did have
Yeah, I, I did have 70 people that actually are in favor of it that was in the documentation.
And I think if, if you look back, to your point, you're saying it's one person, but I think it, it, the city said no more chickens because of one person though, right? Wasn't it what they were doing? I mean, so one person kind of ruined it for everyone. So I, I think
And that's how this city has reacted, 90% of the time is they have made an ordinance because they didn't like one per, I mean, there's an ordinance now because of my connects. You know? It's silly, but it exists.
It is.
I think, I think in we, I think we give it a second shot. I mean, I would love to see that happen and I, I really don't think there's gonna be a ton of people who do take advantage of it because it's work, it's extra work and I don't know, I just don't feel like there's all of a sudden gonna be chickens running everywhere. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't know.
But some people are interested in doing something, but at the same time, we don't want the attorney spending hundreds of dollars for an ordinance together.
Right, so that's what I was asking earlier, is there a way that like a committee could pull together, here's the direction we want to go before we give him just random, like, hey, make us an ordinance? Can we give him direction, more, more direction than just that?
I would say if, if one or two people in the council want to work with the city staff, not three, we don't want to have it
Well, I'd be willing to do that research and help draft something.
I'd, I'd help you.
Yeah, okay.
So Dana, I ask you to make a note to figure out what you're going to do about a neighbor who absolutely can't stand the smell, is repulsed by it and can't hold their windows open because their neighbor has chickens. And what the resources for that individual who doesn't want them next door. Because that, to me personally, would be really important.
Sure.
Because I can see this becoming a situation where someone has chickens, not because they want chickens, but because they want to get even with the neighbor. Trish gets chickens. Hey, listen. I won't go there.
So I make a motion that we proceed with, um, putting together a draft, chicken ordinance with Dana's input, working with city staff. Come back, and Jim, I'm sorry, come back to council with the, uh, do a proposal draft before you have the attorney ready
Right.
highlights, so we give the attorney better direction. For a second?
I'll second that.
Any other comments? I have no problem with the chicken ordinance, you know, I, I appreciate Trish's response, but at the same time, I, um, say Pine Island, Pine Island's ordinance is the end-all, but at the same time, I know we did spend a lot of work looking into any other comments? All in favor, sign if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Approved? I did an office training proposal. Most of it is virtual on those dates. 2015 to 18 date was in a person, in person, but that's now been moved to a virtual. It was five weeks or five days. From May 3rd to May 7th, it's, I think it's $450 for the if you have budget money, this is, uh, I think some key training for our city, third and fifth quarter, yes, uh, training. It's four days, virtual and, um, so I volunteered to help and maybe Trish would do a certain dollars, we could I'd check the phone a couple of times a day, that type of thing.
Yep.
And that allows them to get this needed training. There's some on the page two, there's some virtual training, half a day sessions at the, with minimal cost. Really in advance of the, uh, May training. I make a motion that we approve the May 3rd to May 7th training.
I second.
Your comment? Seeing none, all in favor, sign if you're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is, um, this is the same type of, uh, issue with, in our township, partly township, partly annexation.
Uh, we need to motion to approve all these other trainings.
Virtuals, okay.
Yes, because we've only approved one set. Yes, because we've only approved one set.
Got it, okay. I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
So this is, I said half a day virtual training starting a couple afternoons this week, three hours. Minimal, but it really is all part of the training that both of them really need, so. Any other comments? Not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? Those are approved, thank you, Trish. The orderly annexation agreement, which is something we've had since twenty fifteen with the township. I had it put in the packet just for your one, for your awareness that it is out there. It's not necessarily to discuss the actual ordinance itself, but I just want to draw attention to item number fourteen, which is on page three of the agreement. The agreement was put together, there was a agreement to have a township rent the city hall for all their meetings for a thousand dollars a year. And this is, falls in the same lines of with Tilly's, but from the standpoint of the rent, they really haven't used our facility for quite a few months, probably since last summer. And they continue not to use it until sometime in the future. They are using it, they have to use it on March ninth, which is our annual meeting and elections. So they will use it for that one night for a couple hours. So I was, I'd like to make a motion that we they have not paid a thousand dollars, I don't think yet. I make a motion that we forego the twenty twenty-one rental fee. Any discussion? In favor, signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, that's approved. The next item, last item in personnel is, before we get to PNC, is our checking account, savings account, it's not really a savings account, but it's a second checking account that has drawn some interest very little. But we have a substantial amount of money in those accounts and so we'd like to propose putting a hundred thousand dollars into a CD with the Pine Island Bank. Right now, we have, about two years ago, we did this with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we put into a CD. And we think, the reason we chose a hundred thousand dollars, we being personnel committee, is that we have when we get these large StanTech invoices, which we pay StanTech, which we have in paying, we get reimbursement to PFA, but there's sometimes a four to five week delay before we get that reimbursement back to us. So I just kind of, we want to protect ourselves, but at the same time, take care of StanTech and also just put some of the funds into a CD, so. Is the, is the idea that we want to do there, so. So I'm, I'll make it for discussion, I'll make a motion that we put a hundred thousand dollars into a CD with the Pine Island Bank. Discussion or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? That's approved. So planning zoning, at our December meeting, we talked about Mr. Thompson's right-of-way wall, what the city may consider doing. So we had a motion to have a StanTech look at a, what a cost, what a feasibility cost would take cost. So Joe has outlined a letter that's in your packet. And so it was a cost of forty-five hundred dollars. And I would imagine if the council voted on it, we would go through this capital improvement fund. Public works, capital outlet. Any comments from the memo that you have a chance to read in the packet or Joe can speak to it as well?
I'd like to hear from Joe first.
Um, yeah, so we were asked to take a look at or put a proposal together to evaluate the feasibility of constructing a wall essentially two hundred and fifty feet south of West, West Center Street and a hundred and twenty-five feet north, there's some steep slopes west side of Minnesota Avenue. And so as part of that, we kind of look at that in a technical way, we essentially evaluate and kind of map out the existing topography and utilities and put that and represent that on a plan view kind of figure, and then we start looking at the cross slope and develop a typical section. So that typical section would include, well, the roadway, the existing pavement, the assumption that we've made is that you would want to at least consider a sidewalk at some point in the future, so we'd essentially have a boulevard area that would facilitate sidewalk construction and then the wall setback from there and then from the wall, wall needs to tie into the existing slope at a a viable, mobile, maintainable slope, typically a twenty-five percent or, or less. And then, you know, what other components need to go into the wall? A railing for safety, drain tile, things like that. And so we would take that typical section and essentially cut cross-sections along the road at different intervals and be able to essentially size that wall so we can figure out how high it needs to be, how far it's gonna be setback from the road. And from that, we can essentially figure out, you know, how much excavation needs to happen, how much rock excavation likely needs to happen, how high is the wall, where would it tie back to the property line? And then from that, we can develop a estimate of cost. And so we take those three figures that we've kind of talked about in conjunction with the cost estimate, develop a short memo and package that up and present that to the council. And so the council would take this information and have a reasonable cost and understanding of how that wall would be built, what its impacts to the surrounding area and existing infrastructure would be, and then from there, you can make an informed decision as to whether you wish to move forward or not. If you wish to move forward, well, we have something tangible from, from which to build off it, to develop formal construction documents and bidding documents. And if you don't want to proceed, then, then it starts at that.
So, a question that has weighed for me, and it's something that Mr. Thompson has brought up several times, is the handicap accessible, the ADA rulings and laws and that sort of thing. Where does this project, would this project include ADA accessible? Why did it not include ADA accessible before? What's the impetus for making that goal or, or making that have to be used?
Well, the ADA compliance really comes into play when you start talking about the need to construct this sidewalk in the future. So it's based on our assumption that someday, whether it's any, you know, a year from now or twenty years from now, you're gonna want to put a sidewalk in. And so if we don't configure the wall at the appropriate offset to the existing curb and at the appropriate elevation, you don't really have the ability to construct a sidewalk that'll meet ADA compliance. And so really, that's what we're doing, that's what that typical section says. And so that's where the requirement comes into play. Right now, there's no pedestrian facility there to be ADA compliant.
So there's no, I, I want to use the words no opportunity in the future to put one in because of the way those walls are, the steepness of those walls at this point, correct?
Um, yeah, you'd have to do something different if you were to put a sidewalk in there today. You, you'd have to build a wall or do something to facilitate the construction of an ADA complaint.
Why did, why did the county, I guess my concern is why did the county not have to do that when they did this project to start with?
Well, there's not a sidewalk there.
But you're saying we have to do it because it's future use? What did, why did they not?
What I'm saying is that this, the prudent way to design the wall is to design the wall so that it can accommodate a sidewalk in the future. And if you're gonna construct a sidewalk in the future, it should be ADA compliant. Right now, there's no sidewalk there. There's just a boulevard there.
So that's your answer to Trish's question, why the county didn't have to do it?
Right. The county was doing a.
Because there was no sidewalk.
Well, the county was doing a rehabilitation project. And so adding sidewalk is an improvement that wasn't deemed necessary by the county. There's not a requirement to have a sidewalk behind any curb.
Okay, so that I think is, is maybe where I'm going is, is the way I'm understanding this, the way I have understood like the project we did in Alice Park, is that once you get to a certain threshold financially, you are required to do ADA compliance. Is that correct or incorrect in this situation?
No, I don't, I don't think there's a threshold. If you're gonna do a public improvement with money from the city or the state or the federal government, that project should be ADA compliant.
Again, I go back to, why did the county not have to do that then? I mean, I, I'm not.
So there's no ADA compliance with the roadway. They were reconstructing the roadway. ADA compliance really doesn't come into that unless there's pedestrian facilities, sidewalks that are constructed or existing in conjunction with that.
So why would we put it in when it isn't a possibility there?
So what I'm saying is someday, you might want to put a sidewalk there. And if you, unless you don't, if the council wants to say we never want to put a sidewalk there, you can save a fair amount of money by, you know, that'll allow you to move the wall in and the wall would be less, less tall, those types of things, but that decision precludes you from ever wanting or ever being able to put a sidewalk there without reconfiguring the roadway or removing and reconstructing the wall. And so given its proximity to downtown and to Alice Park, I assume that the council would want to have the option of someday, let's say over the next twenty years, to construct a sidewalk there. And if you're going to construct a sidewalk, it needs to be ADA compliant.
So currently, the only time that, the only issue from my understanding is during Gold Rush. And we put, and we, we choose that place for our, for our, that's the only reason we're having this, this ADA discussion, correct?
The question is.
So I've heard that statement before about the handicap signage during Gold Rush and that not being ADA compliant. You know, frankly, I haven't researched that, I don't know that that's true or not. You know, the reality is Gold Rush is a few days out of the year and, you know, a decision is made to allow ADA compo- or ADA parking there, whether that's legal or not. You know, I guess that's something that could be investigated if you want or move it.
And that would be a Gold Rush Committee thing, that wouldn't be a city council thing.
But, but today, you know, ideally, there's a, you know, ideally, there's a boulevard that's nice and flat, people can get out of their car and do what they want to do adjacent to a curb. But there's not a requirement necessarily that it be, you know, there's not ADA requirements, there's not a sidewalk.
So what's, what's the gist of, of everything we're saying is, are you saying then if, if we are going to put sidewalk in in the future, are you saying the wall would have to go back further? And any idea what we're looking at for feet if, if that would be the case? Seven?
Which would make it even steeper.
Steeper.
Than it is right now.
Right.
Because right now, there's very little, but there is some, there is some slope to it, but if we go back seven feet, there really wouldn't be room for any slope.
Well, there'd be, there'd be a wall that would.
Yeah, I.
Right, but at that point, would we not be affecting his building as well?
Uh, no, the wall, wall can be as tall as you want it to be. So, you know, you can fit a wall in there, you can make it work, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, okay.
You know.
You're not disturbing the, the, I want to say, the, the stability of the, of the ground itself where his building would be concerned, even, I mean, I know it's not that close, but seven feet seems like a lot.
Well, you've got to accommodate future signage. You should have a four to five foot sidewalk and then you need a setback from the vertical face of the wall. So let's say a foot to eighteen inches for, to accommodate signage, a minimum of a four foot par, and then a foot from the wall. Because there's that, there's that setback. Add that up and you get about seven feet.
Is that still in the right-of-way?
Hold on, the right-of-way is. Okay, yeah, the right-of-way is, you know, plus or minus fifty feet from the center of the road, and so you, you've got, you know, there's a lot of.
The sidewalk too, as we, we touched on, I think, is we're looking at this as a really a short term, but it's for our future, we're wanting the city to go downtown, I think that we recognize Alice Park is is going to be a big benefit for us as the activity that we saw last spring and fall even during the winter. So I do think the sidewalk is something that will bring people, even if we go through the next property to the south from the very first street, have a sidewalk ordinance.
Right, right.
So that's probably one reason why it wasn't ever discussed for the county, because it wasn't an ordinance, but at the same time, having a sidewalk in the future across those properties all the way up to the VFW corner, enhanced the draw to whatever development downtown.
You know, if you ever want to put a pathway there, the minimum size of pathways.
I just wanted a clear understanding of where we're going, because the, I, I, I recognize that this is gonna get expensive.
Well, it is.
And I, I really do feel like I personally would like to see this explored further. And I'd like to, I'd like to see the city, I like your idea, I like the city doing this instead of a private resident doing this. Even though I trust the resident, I still would like to see this be something that the city does so that it's consistent throughout the community.
And would this extend to the VFW?
Yes.
Yeah, this is covered from let's see, well, the wall is from.
From Alamo down.
Across VFW to the corner of.
Oh, we did go across the street then?
Yes, from the Alamo where, where Mark Keen's property is, down.
So what I would anticipate is we'll look at that. Frankly, I would recommend my, my gut says is the wall north of West Center Street can be, or the, the slope can be regraded within the right-of-way to facilitate a maintainable three to one slope. And the, that regrading, so with some rock excavation, could be done at a much lower cost than the construction of all. So that's one of the recommendations that I anticipate without having done the analysis would probably come out of the report.
Well, what are you, what are you, what are you saying? Are you saying a block? What are you saying, Joe, you're gonna put a rock on the hillside?
So I'm, I'm telling the.
You rip rap like on, on the, on the riverbank up front of my property?
I'm trying to tell the council that we would, in order to regrade that slope, we would have to excavate rock, because there's a rock outcrop, a bedrock outcrop. And so in order to reshape the slope, it'd have to be excavation of the rock and then facilitate the placement of topsoil to regrade.
What I, what I showed the council. So now the, the slope right now that you see, the right-of-way is where the slope is at, across from the post office. From what I've looked at from the GIS, that's about halfway into the right-of-way, so it's really another ten feet back, if we go back to the right-of-way, then slope it down to the street would be.
And we, we can certainly take a look at that, you know, that would be a way to more cost-effectively address that component of the slope now. Other areas of slope are higher and, and, and there are other topographic constraints that would preclude that from, from happening, but because of that lot is undeveloped at this point, that would be a. a viable, effective option that would be the lower, lowest cost at this point.
Well, Joe, if we did, the council agreed to pursue this study for this, before, to take it to the next step. So if we looked at, say, three parts, we look at the wall from from Center Street all the way south, to the VFW, through John, or Dan's property, would that also go under Herb's property a little bit too?
I would, I would expect that it would. You know, obviously walls cost a lot of money, and so we would look to truncate it as soon as you can effectively truncate it and, and modify the existing slope to facilitate that. You know, if we can do grading as opposed to wall construction, I would, that would be a much more cost effective thing. And so the combination of those two options is, is what I, I would propose to look at within the feasibility study and then kind of, you know, illustrate that with figures and the cost estimate in terms of, you know, where that ball, wall would be and how high it would be and, you know, certainly step up and step down with the height of the wall and what components of the design are incorporated into that, you know, aisles and fences and those types of things.
If the council goes forward with feasibility study, could we also include the installation of the sidewalk all the way to the bridge? In other words, so that it includes the earth What's his last name? If we could include his property in that sidewalk?
Well, you, we could. We could cost out the, you know, we could add a sidewalk within that corridor. Once you start adding sidewalk, then you increase project costs quite a bit. And then you start looking at head ramps and taking out curb and making those facilities ADA compliant. I mean, it really
That's what we did the study with. And if we're going to, if we're going to, at, at least I'd like to see it in the feasibility study so that it, so that we as council members understand how much extra it's going to cost us to actually put that pathway for the public in because we know that that area is already seeing a lot of activity. So I guess we may as well just at least have a good knowledge base. That doesn't mean we have to go forward with it. It means we understand it.
Will that increase the feasibility studies cost though? Because what I don't understand is what, where are people coming from and using the sidewalk?
Well, right now, most of the people, truthfully, are parking down in Alice Park.
Correct. So that's why I'm curious is why we would need a sidewalk for people who aren't walking on.
Right, but if we're being, if we're being told that we should expect to do that in the future, then we may as well look at that cost now versus waiting for it 10, 15 years.
Put, put it in the plan so we pay for the, the plan once.
But do you study
I don't know that I want to put it in the plan. I just
Or not planned, in the study.
Right, I want to know what it's going to cost us if we do it because we're doing so much.
You know, you have two years from now or three years.
Right.
Well, but my question is, do cities just put in one sidewalk at a time? Or is it usually a, it's usually a city, from my understanding, it's usually a citywide thing. So would that really give us that much information? And are, do we not assess homeowners for sidewalks?
Yes.
Right, so is that not
Well, the city really doesn't have sidewalk. Yeah, I mean, there's almost no sidewalk in town. So really, I mean, we do have an assessment policy that deals with street reconstruction. I don't recall that the policy really addresses sidewalk because there's so little of it in town. Typically, sidewalk improvements are done two ways. They're done in conjunction with street reconstruction. If there's a desire to, or they're incorporated into, you know, safer routes to school projects or pathway or pedestrian facility projects and, you know, constructed in larger segments typically. That's where you get the most economy of scale and most paying for your buck.
So I guess my question is, why add it to the feasibility study and it would increase the cost, I'm assuming, of the feasibility study? If we don't have even an ordinance for sidewalk?
We don't have a sidewalk ordinance. We have a maintenance ordinance for sidewalks at this point.
Sure. So that's what I guess, I'm feeling like that's a step we're going, we're doing a step ahead of, that would be a step further than what we even have. We don't have any, you know, guidelines for any of that. So why would we ask to be given a cost analysis? And would it, would that cost analysis even be something that would help us two years from now because pricing has changed?
No, the cost would change greatly, right.
And I guess that's
I agree with you that on that side. Those sidewalks really aren't used that much, except when we have Gold Rush. Then I see the sidewalks on the east side getting used a lot.
But we do, you know, in Gold Rush, we traffic control and we, it's a pedestrian zone. Any entire city is a pedestrian zone at that point.
Right.
And so I just don't think, I don't know, I just feel like it's putting the horse for the, or the cart for the horse if we
Jan?
I'd like to, the two new council numbers are here, as you understand. I've been fighting this for five years.
Yes, I realize.
I understand what's going on here. The point is, is that this was all done, again, I'm going to say, without my knowledge, but all in people's knowledge to do that. So when that happens, we end up in a conundrum like we're in right now. Because someone didn't follow the rules back five years ago when they did the road project. And to answer Joe's question, the city said, in the paper, the mayor said, he didn't have any money. And the county, you all have the letter that says, the county said, the city, two people from the city, Mr. Palin was part of that.
Dan?
We don't, we don't need to go through the history.
But, but your cost, your cost of what goes on there is I've already, I already come to you. I talked about six feet back. I asked you, give me the property back.
We're not doing that.
Dan?
And, and do, and do that in the six feet. You're spending money with Mr. Palin again, thousands and thousands of dollars, and I already told you what
Dan, for the third time, I ask you to sit down. Everything you're talking about is in, we've heard about.
I guess I, I, Mayor, I thought when I come to the meeting and I talked to Tricia, I could speak tonight, but now again, you're telling me that I can't speak.
You're going to speak on some new item, but you're going to repeat something?
I'm, I'm not repeating, I'm saying is what
That'll be everything we've heard before.
What, what Mr. Palin has just said about the sidewalk, I, I've come up six feet, that's two stones high, to make it a great, a gradable thing for me to move. Okay, so when I look today and I go down, I see the Alice and Park, I see a wall, I see the handicap, and I see you guys put a wall and everything else down there to do the ADA. Gold Rush, yes, in fact, to the new people, do, do put signs up. It's illegal. They're putting signs up to say it's illegal to do that. It's like, say, I can drive through town today at 50 miles an hour because I just feel like I can do it 50 miles an hour. When they put those signs up there, it's illegal because you have to have that six foot easement. I served in the, in the Bureau of Presidents for, and, and, and construction. I know the ADA rules.
So Jan, just, that's neither here nor there because we're not Gold Rush. We're the city council. And so if that I know, but if that needs to be addressed in Gold Rush, we will address it. And, and I will put it on the agenda to address that we cannot use the, the property for handicap parking.
Eight or nine handicap parking places that you'll take away.
That, that's fine. We, we can't use it. That's fine. We, we will take it to the Gold Rush meeting. Right now, what we need to decide is are, are we going to have Sand Tech do a feasibility study or not? That's what the council is, is voting on or should vote on tonight. And that's what you've asked us to do. You've asked us to take care of the situation.
Or, or fill the paperwork out.
Or, or you've got your application and we're not to that point yet. So that's what we need to do.
And so my question to you, to you is, I see this can getting kicked down the road a long way.
We haven't been kicking it down.
That's why we're working on it.
We're having a great discussion and, and we're all working on this together. We can't get sidetracked with going back 20 years. We can't do it. We've got to work on this right now. Okay?
Right, but I, I said when I drew the plans out, I, I showed you what the cost was, so.
Right, and
But that's not our cost.
Jan, is the blame game of who did it, who was involved, it doesn't even matter anymore. We're so far past that. We want to move forward, not backward. We want to look forward, not go backwards. So let's look forward. Let's see where we can go together as a group, as a community, and make this worth, work both for you and for the community.
You know, to put a grass thing and not a sidewalk down through there is the same difference. You still got your six foot easement. You still got your, you still got your stuff, no sidewalk.
Let us, let us continue to work on this. Okay. So I, I would concede that Dana's probably correct. We don't need to include the sidewalk. Thank you, Dana.
But, but we need to make sure that there is availability for a sidewalk in the future.
Which is what you're
Yeah, we'd establish essentially a bench, a grass bench that could be converted to a sidewalk without impacting the wall. Still comply with the requirement.
Yeah, and that's why I say not to put the sidewalk in, but just plan for there to be enough room for a sidewalk.
Which is a guy that
We decide we can do it later.
Part of the reason why we would go with our city planner to do this kind of project instead of letting the homeowners do it. Because we are going to look at the future of the city long after we're all gone.
Yeah, and I do think that there's a lot of engineering as far as the wall and its stability. And I want to be sure that, that whatever is done is done in a way that's, that's not going to be dangerous to the public later. So I would make a motion that we continue and do the feasibility study.
I will second that.
So in your, in your study then, would you just break out that area north of West Center Street then?
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that, assuming that it, it works like I'm anticipating it will. But that's what I would rec, I'll, I'll recommend a low cost alternative that works for the city.
Project, so I think we can, we know the main part of the sidewalk and the west and north side.
Yeah, and we can break those, you know, the north and south.
How long will this take, Joe? The feasibility stay, what I'm, what I guess I'm really asking is, is, is it possible to actually start the construction on this, this year?
It is.
Okay.
It's, it's kind of a matter of fitting it into lots of different things.
Right, I understand. The city, the community is busy. Yes, I, I get that, but I, I want to know, is it possible or is it, yeah?
No, it, it would be possible to do this year. Maybe not this spring, but this year if, if, if that's indeed a desire. Now, that said, there is some utility construction in the vicinity of that wall. There's a water surface that is going to vacant property immediately south of Mr. Johnson's property. And it would be best if a wall wasn't there to facilitate that construction. I mean, we, we could do it. We could put a sleeve under the wall. You know, there, there are ways to do it, but again, it, it complicates the project in that.
Again, the reason for the feasibility study.
Yeah.
All right, so is this maybe a returning in March?
Yes, that would be reasonable. I think I've got a timeline in here. I can't remember what I wrote for a couple of months and be Yep.
I would just add to your motion that this would be paid out of the capital improvement fund in public works.
Yes, I would be happy with that.
Set the family amendment?
Yes.
Any other comments? Bring it. All those in favor, proceed and receive the feasibility study for 4,500 dollars. I'd say the hobby is saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I gotta go work.
Thank you, Jan.
I need to excuse myself for just two, two seconds. I won't be long.
First break.
Now, just a question about, do we have to do anything with this application then?
He did not pay his fee.
Okay.
We would proceed something with it after
Okay.
When we decided to do it myself.
Okay.
All right, let's go up to, which comes back, we'll go back to our ordinances. We have one position for 2021 dash one. We have one territorial comment, Joe, Palin, Gil, Palin. Last name is Gil, could be another one.
That's probably my type. What, yours?
Where's my?
Are two types, that's yours? Your last name has an N in it.
I was going to say what?
Take responsibility for that.
Auto correct or try and help you out? Okay, Chris, we're on the resolution 2021 dash oh one. Where this is, this is kind of a documentation, even though we've done the feasibility report. Joe, if you want to speak to it real quick.
Yeah, this is really from the wastewater project. We've been working on the wastewater project for years. And as you know, we've had studies and facility plan, starts and stops with funding. Now we're getting to the point where we're, we're drafted a feasibility report. We're kind of moving forward with the 429 process to assess the project to the benefiting property owners. And so the league of Minnesota cities has kind of a a step by step process to conform to the process. And so really, ordering the preparation of feasibility report is one of the first steps. And so technically, as we went through this project and it started and stopped and ebbed and flowed, we didn't do this process or didn't the council didn't prepare and have the council pass this ordinance. And so it's really to check the box to say, yep.
Can I make a motion that we have in 2021 dash oh one?
Second.
Any other comments? All those in favor of resolution 2021 dash oh one, signify by saying aye. Or no, this is a voice vote, I'm sorry. So by voice vote, all those in favor? I say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Those approve. Gold Rush, a couple FY items. Christine Genetto is a new member. I'm not sure if you can hear the motion or not.
Just an FYI.
FYI. And in your package, you will see a listing of the Gold Rush members. Community where George won, a public member. Brian Bill at here as soon as we can.
Is Marcy still on it?
No.
She's not on it, but she's a volunteer.
Yeah, she'll have, she'll help with the car show, should we?
Okay, we're just parks and trails. And this is the one thing that we added with the Lions Club. Likes to have a outdoor social events thing. Hockey greens and city halls selling hot chocolate and perfect for their gear for the warming shack. And John, are you, you want to speak to us first?
Yes.
Yeah. Your name and address.
Yeah, hi, Mike Muller. I live at 25th Street Northwest, Orno, Minnesota. I'm the vice president of the Orno Lions Club. And I apologize for running in here late. I, I just got home from work and I had Zoom all ready to go. And I wasn't sure if I missed the time to speak, you know, during the initial setup. So I'm like, I better just run down there. So I apologize for that. But, and welcome Dana and Jim. Excellent to see you guys both here. Yeah, so we, we put up the ice rink every year and, you know, we're, we're a community organization for you know, serving the people and, and spreading joy whenever we can. So the ice rink appears to be ready. Of course, we've got snow on it currently. But we're looking at maybe having, you know, COVID But we're looking at maybe having, you know, COVID makes everything a little more difficult. So one of our members came up with the idea of having a hot chocolate social. And just a time when we could actually say, well, actually heat the shack and have hot chocolate and have extra sets of skates for other people if they want to come down and skate on the rink and give it a try. So, you know, just basically an opportunity for the, for the community to come together and enjoy it as a group. And maybe get a little excitement and maybe some new skaters out of the deal. So we're not looking at selling anything. It's just for the community and for the kids.
Can you speak to the heater? What your needs are there?
Well, we haven't really gotten too specifics, but I do have like a Mr. Heater with a propane tank. They have a tip-over safety device, so if it was tip-over, there's not going to be any fires started. And also low oxygen level cutouts. So it's something that we could, you know, leave it ventilating and it would heat up that little shack in no time. So that's just, that's just one way that we could actually heat it. And it's not necessary, you know, we don't have to have heat. But if we are going to have some little feet and little hands out there, it'd be nice to give them an opportunity to warm up. And especially if it takes a while for them to get the skates on and that sort of thing.
Have you considered an outdoor fire? I have plenty of wood.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, that, yeah, I mean, we've actually been looking at doing some sort of winter festival at some point. And, you know, take teaming with the city or the fire department or anyone who would like to maybe do something like that. We have Gold Rush and we'd like to, you know, when it's middle of winter time and there's not a whole lot going on, you know, how cool would it be to set up a shuffleboard out there? Or bean bags or, you know, there, you know, the options are endless. And, you know, obviously COVID kind of put a kibosh on many things. And so we're kind of just taking one little step at a time. And so we're just curious if it'd be possible, practical, to be able to do a little bit of Facebook advertising, maybe invite friends and family. And like what number of people would be limited? Obviously masks, gloves for hot chocolate, you know, that sort of thing. But, you know, just seeing what's possible.
I would like to see you stay out of the shack, not that the shack isn't there to be used, but I would honestly like to see the, that's part of why I suggested the fire pit. Because if you have people going into the shack, you've got them so close because that shack is just not made for gathering. Even if six people would concern me. So, yeah, exactly. I would really, if you're going to do something this year, I've got a couple pits, you're welcome to take them. I've got firewood, come and get them, but I'd really like to see you encourage people. They can check it out, but I'd rather they weren't hovering in.
Yeah, and I get that. And, you know, whatever guidelines or requirements, you know, we're happy to, you know, to abide by those. But at the same time, you know, we're just seeing what's possible, you know, so right now. So if we said one family or one individual person and we came in and disinfected, you know, the seating area, the handles, is that a possibility? And if we ventilated it, you know, yeah, I mean, we're happy to go with any. And I love the outdoor or outdoor fire idea. I think that'd be fantastic, but at the same time, we're going to, that's going to be people huddling a little closer possibly. So.
But if you've got a couple pits going, they're not going to be as, you know what I'm saying? I guess I'd rather.
People aren't going to be huddling with non-family members either.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, maybe I'm weird.
No, I hear you, but I mean, you know, if you don't have a very big fire, you're always.
I mean, yeah, I like the idea. I just want to be sure that we're being very careful to be safe. I mean, we do not want to go, number one, against the governor's rules or ordinance orders. But I want to be sure that.
Well, and do we have that? What is that for outdoor gatherings at this point? What is the, what are the orders at this point for outdoor gatherings?
It's went up and down a couple of times. I want to say it's 15, 20. I don't know.
I know. Okay, so I, I'm again.
Well, I think if you have a couple fires and you space it out.
It's, so from what I read, because again, nerd, I researched this before I came tonight. But I couldn't find anywhere that said it's more than three households or 15 people.
Is that if you're having it at your house or is that anywhere?
Anywhere except unless it's like a family of life celebration or like, thing like that. So that's what.
I'm thinking more like if we have restaurants that are allowed to have.
I know, and that's why I was confused. And so I, nerd, called the Minnesota Department of Health and she wasn't even able to give me more information.
Check out with LMC.
We'll check it out. Yeah, ask them because they, the Department of Health is as confused as I was, it sounds like, when trying to read through this. And so, yeah, I really wanted to.
There'd be a mask required too.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She did tell me that if you serve food, whether it's purchasing or just giving it, you have to have like a plan, like a COVID plan. You have to have gloves, you have to have like this, and you have to like present it to somebody, I guess.
I would even suggest like BYOC. Bring your hot chocolate and.
Totally doable.
I think it'd be a lot.
Bring your hot chocolate, you know, bring your kids down.
It'd be a lot less hassle for you.
Yeah, and I hear that. You know, we're just, you know, trying to think of ways to make it.
Totally.
And, you know, kids bringing, you know, bringing their own hot chocolate, there's plenty of people with their own thermoses. You know, one of the, it's not like we would necessarily have 40 people show up. But that's how quickly you could, you know, you could have four families. And you've got five, six lions who show up and four kids apiece, and all of a sudden you're, you know, you're hitting 30 people.
You're talking to a community that would like to get out. We're all looking for something to do.
You know, so I just joined the Parks and Trails community. And I am just, cannot wait to explore the possibilities of using Ornoco Park more and doing like a night hike or a night snowshoe on those trails and using that big, there's already a giant fire thing there. So there's that, I mean, you have, already have a plan, so I don't want to like make you go. But in a space like that, it's bigger and there's like trail, you know, it'd be, I love that idea. And so, but I agree, I think we should get, try to get us, try to get everyone out if we can follow the rules.
But you know what date?
We don't have any dates set in stone yet. We're thinking maybe like twice. So early February and maybe later February, so two or three weeks later. But before the ice starts melting, we're thankful as anybody that we haven't had that much cold weather and never snow. But so we do have a bit of a shortened time period and.
Advertising on Citizens of Ornoco Facebook would be a good place to advertise.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
City function, but I think Citizens of Ornoco is great.
Yep, I'm a member on there and we advertise all of our Lions Club events there, so.
I don't believe, I don't believe we need the action from us, just a matter of information. Sure, review our thoughts.
We'll have city staff try to confirm numbers, that sort of thing, before we get too far. But if we can do that, I'm happy to work with you as far as the fire pits, the wood, and I have like four pairs of skates. Come get them, we'll do.
Yeah, the more the merrier. Thank you so much.
Chris is not sponsoring the event.
Other gentleman who has put the bucket out here and has how many skates already that have been donated?
You know, I'm not exactly sure who that'd be. Dean Radke is, okay. Yeah, so it was actually Dean's idea, you know, I mean, we take ideas from anybody and it's like, wow, that's great. You know, let's try to do something ice skating wise. So he's been kind of keeping up on the ice a little bit, you know, checking it. Apparently he's got a bucket out there for skates.
Last week, I think he said he had like 21 pairs.
And we've even had to cut our Lions Club meetings, so we haven't even heard this information. So, but that's fantastic.
You should share that with the town or maybe did already.
I guess I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dean, yeah, true.
So you've got John Marks's email, I'm sure.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
Great idea.
We like it, thank you.
Very good, okay. Sounds like a lot of fun. Hope they have good weather for that. Feasibility study water and sewer. Several things we just want to touch base on. We talked at December, December meeting. We've done the feasibility study and we need to bring it back for a public hearing, probably in the March timeframe. And there's a, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Between that and the next item, which is our wastewater feasibility presentation. And right now, we're, we would like to schedule, if everybody's schedule is okay, for a special meeting on January 28th at 6:30. Where Joe will give a presentation. And from that presentation, that will lead us into our February council meeting where we'll be setting a public hearing date to share for the feasibility study in the March timeframe. We haven't set a date yet. But we'll try to do that February meeting, maybe discuss that on a special council meeting on the 28th, the Thursday. And so let's just go into the next item and kind of wrap this all together. The next item number three is a request Stan Tech to proceed with an easement acquisition authorization, I should say, professional services associated with property easement, permit acquisitions and public slash agency outreach. And just, your packet was a work plan for use of $367,706 of our bonding funds for those activities. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at that work plan. Got dry glasses on.
I wasn't able to find it.
It was right in the packet. Is that right? It's January 14th letter.
Yeah.
It's in the packet. It was on before, right after.
I'll just keep looking.
Before the garbage dump.
That's the job of what, the letter is and is a work plan.
I've got Joe's out, I'll pull through. Just so everybody's aware, my computer's acting up and I was not able to pull up the packet without it blacking out. So it would give me the first page and that was it.
Same thing as before?
No, this is what it did when I first got the computer. It would blackout and it's giving that again. So I was able to get to the first page and that's as far as it would go. My computer needs to. Yeah, that is definitely not in this packet. Okay, that's fine. I can use Joe's for a second.
I've got my own.
Yeah, no, mine did not have it. There's a couple of things I don't have. That's, yeah, that's Joe's. Okay, thank you. You don't have it either, Joe? I just got it from Riley.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, I do too.
You do, okay. Thank you.
It's right here. I just think this is from Jan.
Yep.
Well, yeah, if I might just take a minute, there is this letter proposal from Stan Tech, January 14th. And it's essentially for the authorization of the next phase of the project. You know, at the earlier meetings, the last few months, we've been authorized to complete final design for the wastewater treatment facility as well as the sewer collection and conveyance system. In the December meeting, council authorized us to add in the water distribution improvements to the project. And so all of that work is proceeding. Now we're at a point where we can initiate the acquisition of easements and property, the preparation of permit applications, and then other public outreach in terms of assisting the city with the assessment process and having public hearings and coordinating with PFA and MPCA and other agencies, coordinating with the city attorney, with the city's financial folks to complete the necessary applications to continue to move the project forward. And so we've really kind of laid that out within this letter. So the letter is just a two-page, fairly straightforward letter. And we're proposing to do all of the work that's kind of outlined in the work plan. So the work plan is a five-page spreadsheet that we kind of identify the tasks and then break the task down into subtasks and describe those subtasks, escalate the hours that are necessary to complete the subtasks that multiply by the hourly rates yields the total estimated fee. We propose to complete all of this work on an hourly basis. And so essentially, we get paid for the time we put in. Hopefully it's less time, but this is our best estimate at this point in time. And all of the work is completed in accordance with our master services agreement with the city of Ornoco. So really, that's kind of what we have within the, within the letter. All of this work is financed through the 2020 Bonding Bill as part of that bond appropriation. Engineering tasks, property acquisition tasks, those types of things are included. And so it'll come out of that essentially. The city gets reimbursed through PFA, just like we've been doing for years. And so that process will continue. And so again, like the mayor said, there's a total of about $367,706 and work tasked to be completed to continue to advance the project. And so that's really what we're seeking authorization for. Any questions about the work and the associated letter proposal?
I'll speak one comment about the public outreach when we start talking about reaching out to the public. Stan Tech will put together the, to talk about a brochure, some communications, some form letter going out to the public, for the public hearing for the 500 letters that we're going to send out, if we mentioned that before. So that will all be generated by Stan Tech. And there may be some support in getting those letters out with staff too. I'm not sure what exactly that entails, but there is some support there.
There's really, obviously, there's a significant amount of work to do in terms of the, first of all, the easement acquisitions. There'll be a fair amount of public outreach with that process. And of course, that process needs to follow state acquisition requirements and laws. And so that's what we've kind of set up the process to do. So in conjunction with that, there's a lot of written correspondence as well as a public open house events that'll be completed in conjunction with the easement acquisition component. And then the phase three, public outreach and agency coordination. There's obviously the public hearing that we've got tentatively scheduled for March as well as a public open house event after that public hearing. And, you know, the preparation of documentation to kind of support that, especially as we're going through the pandemic. We thought that it's important that we don't, that we would kind of go above and beyond where what we normally do in terms of conveying information to people, not only in person via presentation, but also physically mailing them some documentation in terms of summaries of the project, pointing them to the city's webpage where the facility plan and the feasibility report and various other supporting documents can be found. You know, preparing a frequently asked questions document that can be mailed out in conjunction with the invitation to the public hearing and trying to go above and beyond what we'd normally do for public outreach so that, you know, people understand the project and have their questions asked without having to come to City Hall necessarily to see the presentation. Not the, and not welcome to, but frankly, the number of people that we have to deal with in terms of essentially five hundred persons, we can't have that many people here. And so we're planning to do this type of meeting where we allow people to participate via Zoom. Of course, they can come in person and then following the public hearing, that's tentatively planned. We'd have a public open house where I'd probably just be here all day. And if people want to come in, whenever they have an opportunity to ask questions, to look at the figures, talk to city staff, that, that opportunity to be afforded them at that point. So all of that type of information is really included within the, within the letter proposal and work plan. And as the mayor noted, we'd be working with the city finance folks, Mike Duboni. So I would expect, you know, maybe Mike would, would spend a day, day and a half kind of helping review the process and make, making sure that the financial components of it are being met by the city. And the same would happen with the city attorney. He's looked at the feasibility reports, reviewing the statutory requirements associated with this assessment process. He's, you know, been helping or will be helping with the easement acquisition process, making sure that documents are recordable and he's accepting with the easement formats and, and all the different things that need to happen. So that, that cooperation with existing city staff will continue to work. And of course, we've worked with Carolyn on resolution prep and filings and those types of things, just like we did.
Joe, you've got open house one and two. Are we planning on doing two?
So open house one and two. What, what, what number is that?
Three point three and three point four, sixteen hours a piece.
So there's two open houses if you really kind of look at that. Ones. So the first open house is really dealing with, or being here, what I described after the, after the public hearing that we've been talking about, okay? The second open house is really before construction starts, so probably this fall.
I saw, I didn't see spring and summer. So you've got one in the spring, one in the.
And so the second, yeah, second one ideally would be after construction, the project's bid. And we can meet here with a contractor and focus more on construction-related questions like, you know, how am I going to get my mail? Who's going to pick up my trash? Will my access be impacted? Are they going to knock down my trees? Will they, you know, replace the flowers in my, around my mailbox? Those types of questions.
So Joe, I think that would be on this single page that you, Joe handed out. It's kind of a chronological data. On January nineteenth, these are the best dates we have so far. So, but I think it'd be good, you, this is the one open house, number one. But we don't have open house number two, which is here, but I missed it.
So what really this deals with is the assessment process. So the two open houses that are in section three, they don't have anything to do with assessments. And so I didn't include them. This is really what's required to follow the statutory requirements. So this is what Carolyn and I need to work together to make sure that we're getting resolutions to the council for approval. We're following these steps. This is how we notify people of public hearings and those types of things. So this is, these are the steps for the assessment process. Some of the public hearings are associated with just public outreach and coordination.
Good, thank you. I missed the assessment.
No, it's confusing. There's a lot of data here.
If anybody would like a eleven by seventeen copy of these five pages, just let the city staff know, it'll be easier to read if you want to follow that, so. I'm not.
We have it. If we were at the last water and sewer meeting, we probably already have it. In that format.
You would definitely have the larger maps, like these.
I'm not finding one place.
Great, I'm finding.
So just handed it out at the beginning.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, got it. I get it now.
And that's really a function of the last sewer and water meeting. We kind of talked about the process and, and it is confusing and it's hard for folks to kind of wrap their head around. So I kind of tried to sequentially put it down on paper so that everybody could have it. You know, Carolyn and I will post it adjacent to our desk and it'll be kind of a guide.
Let me make a motion that we approve authorization for professional services.
Second.
Any comments or discussion that you want to bring up?
Just for clarity's sake, that authorization is for a total of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and six dollars.
Reimbursable with funding.
Not P F A. Is it P F A?
Well, on the 2020 bonding.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Not all of them. I should say, just before I ask for a motion, one of the items on page one of the work plan, talk about securing a U H F licensing for the wastewater system radio telemetry project for eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars. And there's a quote, a two-page quote in your packet, and that's all part of this acquisition approval.
This is in the three hundred and sixty-seven.
It is. It's part of the reimbursable expenses. It's essentially securing the radio frequencies from F C C so that when we put in the telemetry, so the lift stations can talk to the treatment facility and so on, that we have a frequency that's designated for us.
So that, will that system stay in place? And if it does, is there a rotating or continuing cost to the city of Ornoco?
Yeah, it's, it's a nominal amount every ten years. It's a few hundred dollars, so, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
If you pay through our user fees, I'm sure.
A tiny fraction of the cell modem, what the cell modems bills would be, so it's a good option.
All in favor, sign the probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. That's approved, Joe.
Ryland, I should have, I'd like to mention just the fact that we're talking with the city attorney and we'll be talking with Mike Duboni, and I'm assuming that that's acceptable to the county council. For example, those folks might put in a dozen hours for the next couple of weeks. Obviously, there's a cost to the next couple of months. Obviously, there's a cost to that and I don't want the council to be surprised by that. But having the city attorney and having your financial consultant involved with the project and providing advice and reviewing documentation, I think is important for the city. And frankly, I'm, I'm not an attorney or a lawyer, so they, they really need to play a role.
So we, well, Joe and I were talking about this. We plan to have, we'll make sure it's itemized, both in the bill from the attorney and also from our planning. Our plan would be to turn those fees into P F A to be reimbursed. We think it's all part of the acquisition process, but hopefully the P F A will reimburse us for that from the bonding field money because it does regard around acquisitions, so.
Do we have a general cost in mind?
I would kind of say.
Six thousand, I don't know.
Something like that. I was going to say twelve, sixteen hours each would, would probably do it. But that's just my guess.
We want to itemize, and Mike, our attorney, does itemize every phone call, every email. It's really broken down very clearly, so. All right. Garbage handling bill or garbage handling contract. We are soliciting garbage hauling bills. This will be published in the Zembrota paper next Wednesday and the following Wednesday. We'll get it back at our February meeting. Basically, we've been operating without a contract with advanced disposables since last March. Somehow the conversation came up, or come across a letter from advanced disposal. Of course, they've been just percy, they were purchased by waste management. So it's one of these transitional things that kind of fell through the crack with city staff. And they really didn't approach us about it, so we've gone out, we've sent them a letter, but we've also submitted a bid to, we're posting it, and it'll be coming back on the February the tenth, noon, which is the Wednesday before, we send the council packet out for the February sixteenth meeting. People are interested in doing it and we're looking for, it'd probably be a two or three-year contract. So to that, why, I, coming back at the February meeting. Consent agenda?
I'm hoping to approve consent agenda. Right, well, I have a number five underwater and sewer that we didn't address. Am I the only one that has that?
No, we all have it.
Is that something we're going to discuss at the twenty-eighth?
I'm sorry?
Underwater and sewer, there's a number five that we didn't discuss. Is that going to?
Station.
Oh, okay.
Ground station.
Well, that's what you published. That's why I don't have a copy of that.
What's the new one right on the desk over there?
Oh, it's this agenda, okay. Okay. I told her to put that in.
Exactly.
So what it is, and we'll be discussing this at the January meeting. It is a, the water and sewer recommended, our water and sewer committee last week, we recommended a zero payment compensation for low-pressure systems to the house, which is the grinder systems. And right now, it's included in the presentation. We'll speak to it at the January twenty-eighth meeting.
I think the basis for that recommendation is that the low-pressure grinder systems solely serve that house. And so rather than increase the project cost and then assess back a component to them, the thought is that there wouldn't be compensation for those easements. And really, that's the direction the public facilities authority wants us to go. They don't want us to pay for those easements, and so. I think that's a good thought process that we can follow.
Who's second of the consent?
Nobody's second, just Trish.
I'll second it. Comments about the consent agenda? All in favor? Saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Want to include her?
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
Glory. Be second. All in favor, city council saying aye?
Aye.
Yeah, I hope your first reading was, I don't want to your expectations, but.
We didn't leave.
You want this?
I like your shirt.
So, since you're all still here, I want to provide one piece of information.